Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, February 17th at 7:00 PM. We're in regular session tonight. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum, and all members of council are present. The next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular sessions held on January 21st and February 3rd. If I could have a motion?
So move.
Approving those? Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of those minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Those minutes have been approved. We next have communications, one of which is a letter that we've received from WODA Cooper Companies. They're based on South Front Street in Columbus, Ohio, and they are announcing that they were, are going to be working on a residential rental development within the one-half-mile radius of our political jurisdiction. And they will be submitting this application to utilize multifamily funding programs of the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. This planned as a 60-unit development, and it's going to be located on South Plains Road. Do we have other communications? Councilmember Clotfelter.
I would just like to take the opportunity to recognize a group of people who I saw doing an excellent job today. At the community center today here in Athens, there was a big event called Healthy Hoops to encourage children to get more exercise by playing basketball, and it lasted all day long. And the men's basketball team from Hawking County came and helped those students. And when I was looking, it looked like they were doing an excellent job of communicating with those students, and they just made it a much better event. So I would really like to thank the members of the Hawking County Men's Basketball Team.
Yes, Councilmember Smedley.
Thank you. We've received notification that there will be an open house for getting information about the West Union Street improvements. This is scheduled for Tuesday, February 25th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM in Room 103 at the Innovation Center. And this is an opportunity to get an update on the plans and to provide any feedback. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Cottis.
President Isley, thank you. The next school board meeting for the Athens City School District is happening this Thursday. That is the 20th of February, 6:30 PM, Athens High School Auditorium.
Okay, thank you. Any other communications from council members? Will they move on to communications and reports from other elected officials? Law Director Eliason?
No.
Auditorium?
No.
Mayor Patterson.
Just a couple things for council. Engineering and Public Works has put out their list of pothole filling that'll be going on this week and into next week. Actually, it'll start this Thursday. It's gonna be on Shaffer, where they're gonna raise and level the sewer work that had been done, filled the large hole there. Then potholes on Campbell, Shannon, Albany Road, and North and South Blackburn Roads. The other thing I want to share is a kind of a feel-good thing. I got an email from an individual who lives in Huntington, West Virginia, and had heard about the DC Fast Charge charging station that's gonna be deployed at the community center pool area. And this individual, by May, wrote, "Congratulations to Athens and to you for the new SAE-CCS-DCFC." So it's the charging station. "As a Huntington, West Virginia Chevy Bolt EV owner, I will visit often on my way to Bowling Green, Ohio, and will spend money in your restaurants."
That's excellent.
And this individual is a surgeon, a physician, in the Huntington, West Virginia area. The last two things I want to share real quick with council is just reminders that tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM at the Athens Middle School is the Andrew Jackson-Davison proclamation and presentation of the lawyer's picture. And as I understand it, it will be taken to the courthouse. So again, that's at Athens Middle School tomorrow at 6:00. And then on Thursday is Accessible Ohio, which will be at the Margaret Walter Hall Rotunda. And that's at 6:30 PM. That is an event that sponsored the keynote speaker, who's, I'm blanking on her name at this moment, but she is the first blind and deaf individual to graduate from Harvard Law School.
You're looking it up.
Are you looking it up? Thank you. We can come back to that. But again, that's, that is going to be at the Walter Hall Rotunda at 6:30 PM on Thursday.
Great, okay. All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 120 is an ordinance authorizing participation in Sourcewell, a cooperative purchasing program. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. This is a program to basically get better pricing for our bids, and we've discussed the dead length. Basically, the Service Safety Director is authorized to register with this purchasing program so that we can participate in program as a member, so that we can procure equipment, materials, supplies, and things for the city. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve, 00120.
Second. We have a motion and second for approval of 120. Are there any other questions or comments from council, administration, or the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 220 is an ordinance authorizing unneeded or obsolete municipal personal property to be sold by internet auction, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I make a motion to approve 0220.
Second.
This ordinance is our regular ordinance to be able to sell obsolete municipal property via the internet auctions. These items will be advertised for no less than 10 days, and it's pretty routine business. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion.
I have a quick question. Is this when we start the process where we get rid of police guns and things like that? Is this through the process? When we have access firearms, they're changing them? Yeah. Somebody asked me that it came up. So if it's not this process, then it's kind of off-topic. But what happens to armament that we sell or?
They're being traded in, weren't they?
They are traded in, and this has come before council several times.
Right.
And when we do dispose of either the issue, sidearms, or complicated, it'll go through a certified.
Right. So it has its own special program. Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval. Are there any other comments or questions from council, administration, or the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 920 is an ordinance amending ordinance 5219 granting an enhanced access easement to allow utilities to property contiguous to Hope Drive, introduced by Councilmember Cottis.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 0920.
Second.
This is down towards where Hope Drive is. We at one point had, there was plans to put a head start there. Those plans have moved along, but there are other process, progress, and other developments that may want to go there. This will be in place for them to be able to develop that piece of property.
Okay. We have motion and second for approval. Any other comments or questions from council, administration, or the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1020 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to Ohio University, owner 338 West State Street, to allow a ground-mounted sign, introduced by Councilmember Cottis.
I move that we adopt 1020.
Second.
Thank you. This is a university wayfinding sign. It will be matching all the other wayfinding signs that the university uses. It's for the medical area. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1020. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1120 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to Ohio University to allow a historical marker on Mulberry Street near Baker Center and the junction with South Court Street, introduced by Councilmember Cottis.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 1120.
Second.
This particular one, I want to say thank you to all the individuals and organizations that were involved to put this historic marker on Mulberry Street to commemorate a lynching that had occurred in Athens. It's a, it's a bookend to our historic Court Street where we have historic marker at Armory and now down by the university. Thank you.
We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1120. Any comments or questions from administration or council or audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1220 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to Harry Levine, owner 40 Hooper Street, for lawn purposes, to meet lot size requirements for an existing historic structure, introduced by Councilmember Cottis.
Thank you. Sometimes right-ofaways are kind of too undue historic, sort of, you know, kind of odd things that happen with mapping and surveys, and this is one of those. So I adopt, I move to adopt 1220.
Second.
Thank you. We did speak about it, and the landowner did come in to discuss it in two previous meetings. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 1220. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Cottis?
I can only, you know, and this is just an assumption, but I believe that having that, having US-50 in the four lane going through there, we probably have other situations where property lines and right-ofaways have been kind of diced up. That's what happens when a highway comes through. So it's something that we do, but.
And they come through every once in a while when they need to be fixed, so, yeah.
Good. Let's fix it.
Okay. Ordinance 1320. Isn't, do we vote on that? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Got sidelined by the comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Ordinance 1320 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of softening salt for the water treatment plant, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 1320.
Second.
And yes, this is pretty straightforward. It is authorizing our Service Safety Director to expend up to $165,000 for the purchase of softening salt for our water treatment plant, which is a necessary item.
Can I ask a quick question? We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1320. Yes, Councilmember Cottis.
I'm assuming that this comes with accreditation or some kind of certificate of what its purity is through the process.
I believe it does.
Okay. Because there are other places that are having issues between what's brine and what's salt and what's nasty and radioactive, and they're all trying to make it so that it can be used for everything. I would like, for all our salt purposes, any sort of salt to be certified, that it's not coming from that process. Thank you.
Okay. Good point. We have a motion and second for approval of 1320. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1420 is an ordinance authorizing disposal of certain vehicles no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1420.
Second.
Thank you. This ordinance is something that we as a city routinely need to do, and that is that we authorize appropriate disposal of vehicles that are no longer needed within the city. And then when the timing is right, the authorization is already in place for those vehicles to be disposed of and replaced. And this ordinance authorizes the disposal of 19 vehicles, which I can read off if people so desire, but we did go through the whole list previously.
Thanks for providing the detail earlier.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1420. Any other, any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1520 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a dump truck chassis for the Engineering and Public Works Department, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 1520.
Second.
And this ordinance is very straightforward. Basically, what the title says, our city uses a specific dump truck specifically for asphalt patching, and we need to replace the chassis of that. So this authorizes the Service Safety Director to expend up to $70,000 for that chassis.
We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1520. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1620 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a vacuum truck for the Engineering and Public Works Department, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. Again, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 1620.
Second.
This ordinance authorizes the purchase of a vacuum truck, and the Service Safety Director is authorized to expend up to $400,000 for this specific truck. $300,000 is coming from the Sewer Stormwater Fund, $20,000 from the Water Fund, and $80,000 from the Sewer Fund.
We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1620. Any comments or questions from council, administration, or audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1720 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of water valve exercising equipment, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 1720.
Second.
There's a race on seconds tonight. This ordinance, as the title says, is authorizing our Service Safety Director to expend up to $90,000 for equipment necessary for exercising the valves in our water line, so we can make sure that they function when they are needed.
We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1720. Any other, any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1820 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA, federal local let project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the construction of a Safe Routes to School Grant Street Project Number 331, introduced by Councilmember Cottis.
President Isley, thank you. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 01820.
Second.
And this is a project that is happening on the Near East Side on Grant Street. This is a $194,000 project that will put sidewalks on Grant Street between Stimson Avenue and Morris on the, on the east side of the street, which is the Bolianicide, if I've got my directional.
Yes.
Okay, the east side of the street. So a local let project, it is 100% covered by, by ODOT through the Safe Routes to School Program. This is funding that came from 2016. If we didn't find a use for it, we were going to lose it and also get nicked by ODOT on future, future grants.
Right, okay. So we have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1820. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1920 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into contract for construction of the Safe Routes to Schools, Grant Street Project Number 331.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make an emotion, a motion to approve ordinance 01920.
Second.
And so this is just, just an additional ordinance that goes with the, with the Grant Street Project. Like I mentioned before, in the first ordinance that we just spoke of, it was a local let project, but this is a little bit different than every local let project I've seen up until this point, in that we will still be putting the project out to bid. When the, when the contractors need to be paid, we contact ODOT, and ODOT then releases the funds.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1920. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2020 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for a bridge painting project within the corporation boundary on State Route 50, PID number 79207, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Cottis.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 02020.
Second.
And this is one of the standard LPA state project agreements that I usually get to speak about. This one is where ODOT is doing bridge painting. This is on two bridges on US-50, Times Curve. I believe there's the, is two bridges that are slated for, for painting. This year, ODOT is responsible for 100% of the costs of this, of this improvement.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 2020. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We'll now move on to ordinances for second reading, and on these, I read the title so that they are read for the public record, and can, we can have any comment or questions if needed. And I think a few of these will be suspended tonight because we have some time considerations for payment of certain items. Ordinance 820 is an ordinance amending ordinance 131-19, 20 staffing, 2020 staffing levels, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. Ordinance 2120 is an ordinance closing certain streets in the Uptown area for the International Street Fair, Cruise Inns, Brew Week, and Bounty on the Bricks, and is introduced by Councilmember Cottis. Ordinance 2220 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area during the Ohio Brew Week events and the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser, and is introduced by Councilmember Cottis. Ordinance 2320 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the Uptown area on Saturday, July 11th, 2020, and Saturday, July 18th, 2020, for the Ohio Brew Week, introduced by Councilmember Cottis. Ordinance 2420 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for a resurfacing project within the corporation boundary on US-33 and 50s, PID 84579, and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Councilmember Cottis. Ordinance 2520 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a closed-circuit sewer television, CCTV camera system for the Engineering and Public Works Department, introduced by Councilmember Grace. Ordinance 2620 is an ordinance amending the appropriation ordinance, the 2020 appropriation ordinance, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
President Isley?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 02620.
Second.
Thank you. We are under a, something of an emergency situation. We have a replacement system in place, and we need to approve this as soon as possible so that we can get a secure server and the necessary software to run our city systems. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to adopt 02620.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. And we have any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2720 is an ordinance authorizing the auditor to enter into a contract with Creative Microsystems, Inc., known as CMI, to upgrade software used by city departments. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 02720.
Second. And the reason being the same?
Same being is this is the software that runs on the hardware from the previous ordinance.
Okay. That's important. Okay, we have a motion and second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 02720.
Second. Okay. And we have a motion and second for suspending, or for approval of this ordinance, and any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance has been approved. We now have ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 2820 is an ordinance closing certain streets in Uptown Athens on Friday, June 19th, and Saturday, June 20th, for the Brick Cycling Event, and this is introduced by Councilmember Cottis.
President Isley, thank you. It was great to have Mr. Brown attend the last committee meeting and talk a little bit about the event. He's expanding it this year in that he wants to have a Friday evening event which will, which will impact East Union Street, so there'll be a closure there. And then, of course, Saturday is the traditional course of Court Street, West State Street, Congress, and West Union, and impacting additional streets that come into those, into that rectangle.
Okay. And do we have any comments or questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes, Councilmember Smedley.
Thank you. During the presentation, it was brought up that his current plans were gonna hit part of Richland Avenue. Was that resolved? Did we have an alternate route? Do we know yet?
My understanding was that they.
Did they already resolve that? Or?
Well, there is. Yeah, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting when this came up, and that is that what we will do is that we're already gonna have the Richland Avenue pedestrian passageway, you know, well under construction, so there will be detours in place already to come into the Uptown area. So for this event, it will direct people up High Street.
Got it.
So you'll be coming up West Union and turning onto High if your intent is to get around the cycling event, but still wanting to go somewhere uptown. Or maybe you want to go attend the cycling event, the Brick Critterium. Again, you would go all the way on down to Congress, or down to Carpenter, and then from there, access the Uptown area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Ordinance 2920 is an ordinance amending ordinance 1819 to increase the authorized appropriation expenditure for construction and construction engineering services for the Richland Avenue pedestrian passageway, which is project number 311, introduced by Councilmember Cottis.
President Isley, thank you. And, and we had, we had discussion at transportation last, Transportation Committee meeting last Monday, speaking about this project that is, that is set to start on March 2nd. The, there was a request to increase the contingency fees from $150,000 up to $432,500. So that's an additional increase of, is it $282,500, I believe, is the, is the total? We did, right after council, we did get a message that the, let me get the total. The university did come forward and is now committing, instead of just $400,000, they're now up to $646,783. And so that's official. We can, we can speak to those dollars being allocated to the project. Member Smedley? Member Smithley had a question about the contingency, and Director Hetty responded that it was the bidding process, since it happened a couple times, that that's why the contingencies went up a little bit, because they had to change the time of the project. And they hope to keep this down with the hiring of that structural engineer.
And any other questions or comments? Okay. We'll move on to ordinance 3020. This is an ordinance authorizing an agreement with IPS Group, Inc., to provide parking technology and related services for the Division of Parking Services, and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you. Now, this was, this is replacing some hardware and software that are, that are, parking officers are currently using. This works more with our smart meters. Cost-wise, it's a little bit, it's about the same to maybe a little bit more, depending on how much it gets used over the course of a month. I've been told that the meter revenues will more than offset any additional fees that we will, that we would see from this. And what I can see with the technology and what's been explained to me, I think it's going to, it's going to speed up the process of monitoring our streets, especially when you're looking at our 24-hour and 72-hour rule, and that you can actually task people that don't have to drive a right-handed vehicle. This is the cameras that mount on the vehicles to look at and take photos of the parked cars. You can actually task almost anybody to just drive down the street now and capture all of that data. So I would hope to see that we could expand our enforcement of parking, and also at the same time, bring costs down on our, on our overhead, too, with our salaries. Why am I stuttering so much? I don't know.
And I have a question. Last week, we had talked about overlap, and we talked about either suspending or declaring an emergency. And I see this has got the declaring an emergency clause in it.
It does.
I'm okay going to second read. First, my personal, and then, because at least then we can have people have more conversation about it. I haven't heard anything yet, but this is our first, our first discussion together.
And I wasn't recommending suspending.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I was actually, I guess, questioning why the declaring the emergency was in, so we can provide adequate time for staff training and implementation. Okay.
So...
So it is, okay.
It's just questioning whether monitoring of parking constitutes an emergency.
Which is my question last week.
Right. So we, I think, agree that before use of the equipment begins, staff should be adequately trained. But whether or not it's, their training or them not starting immediately constitutes a city emergency, or meet for an emergency clause.
Does the other contract end?
No.
It ends April 25. So there is ample, ample time, even with, even with the 30-day. Am I correct? I'd have to do the math.
This is chief...
The chief recommended.
Hmm.
All right. Chief recommended it. We will go with that.
And the law director approved it.
Okay, that sounds fine. Ordinance 3120 is...
I'm sorry, so we will go three reads then on this? Would that be then?
Yeah, we can go the three reads.
Okay, all right.
So that'll allow the time for the public comment, too.
Okay, great.
Okay. Ordinance 3120 is an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance and amending ordinance 10418, authorizing design services for the wastewater treatment plant, dewatering project number 320. Introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. This is an authorization that we discussed last week at committee meeting, and it is authorizing an additional expenditure specifically for design services for the dewatering project at our wastewater treatment plant. And Section 2 of the ordinance reads that Section 2 of ordinance 10418 is hereby amended to read as follows. The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $272,209 from sewer maintenance fund for project design services. That includes $30,000 for preliminary engineering as per ordinance 7218. And that is an increase from what had previously been authorized of $170,000. But we believe that by approving additional design work, we will be able to save quite a bit in eventual construction.
Thank you.
And, yes, Mayor?
Yes. Council had asked what building this was down at the wastewater treatment plant, and so I don't know if Scott or Ryan or esteemed government channel folks can zoom in on this at all or not, but there's the building itself. It does sit within a stone's throw of the digesters that are down there. So it's pretty interesting that we're able to repurpose a building. What will be, what will need to be done, though, is there will be an extension added to the front of the building, a 24-foot by 40-foot addition, which will facilitate the loading of trucks down there with the dewatered sludge.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Ordinance 3220 is an ordinance amending ordinance 2819, authorizing design engineering of the Stimson Avenue Improvements Project number 315. Introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. This is an ordinance, an appropriation, covering the design and engineering services right-of-way acquisition for the Stimson Avenue project, which will occur in 2021. And the pertinent section amending the ordinance reads as follows. The 2020 appropriation ordinance 013019 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $128,100 to Street Rehabilitation Fund 572, transaction code 500. As discussed in committee last week, this is necessary from the city engineer, not only to be able to purchase right-of-way easements, but also additional survey costs, additional drainage design. They are trying to eliminate driveway impacts on Stimson Avenue in this project, as well as bury as much of the utility lines as possible. So this additional appropriation includes monies for all of those services. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mayor Patterson?
Just wanted to point out to council, I've mentioned this in the past, there is a grant mechanism under ODOT called the Transportation Improvement District Grant. It's an economic development leg of ODOT. We've tried for this in the past on a couple different projects, and it's very, very competitive for a 25% match. In other words, they will cover up to $250,000 of a project, and the city would have to come up with the other 75%. At this moment in time, the district of which we reside, that qualify for this particular type of grant, we are quickly trying to figure out whether or not to apply for $250,000 to go towards the Richland Avenue pedestrian passageway project. And if the timing is off for that, since this is, the Stimson Avenue project is a 2021 project, it may line up well with the Stimson Avenue project, both of which far exceed, you know, the amount that, well, the amount that we could qualify for. We could easily qualify for all $250,000 under this program. But again, just keep in mind, council, that it's real competitive. I've been through this twice already, and we weren't successful. But, you know, I'm one of those people, as you know, that we're going to turn over every stone we possibly can for funding that would help with the costs of these projects.
If the timing were to work out, is there some reason why we couldn't apply for that funding for both of those projects?
We could, but what you do is you rank order projects, because we're not the only ones who could be applying. The township has projects, the Athens Township. The county could have projects. The county engineer is involved in those meetings. So could the city of Nelsonville. So there could be other projects that come forward. At this point in time, I don't know that there are any other projects throughout the region, so if there were, I could bring forward both. But you have to, again, I have to get more clarity on the Richland Avenue pedestrian passageway being a qualifier, because that has already been sold as a project, and so that may keep us from not being able to put the Richland Avenue pedestrian passageway in. If that's not the case, then, you know, absolutely, put that one in.
Thank you.
And likely do that one first. It's all based on the number of businesses that, whatever the roadway is that feeds a district or a retail corridor or whatever, that's how you get extra points for that, you know, that you're showing that there's a lot of businesses in that area. Both Stimson Avenue and Richland Avenue have a large number of businesses. So that's a good thing. This is unlike everything else, that the safety grant relies on the number of crashes and potential fatalities. This one is a little bit different, and then it's looking at the economic impact of an area, if you can improve a roadway to get into a retail district or a commercial corridor.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Ordinance 3320 is an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I will read the pertinent sections. The 2020 appropriation ordinance 13019 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums. $3,000 to CDBG Fund 248, transaction code 300, for property taxes. $5,000 to Athens Enhancement Fund 250, transaction code 300, for Athens and Bloom. $2,000 to Parking Garage Fund 230, transaction code 300, for property taxes. We also have in this appropriation amendment, Section 2, which is to decrease the Recreation Fund 270, transaction code 300, by $23,000, and increase the Community Center Fund 271, transaction code 300, by the same amount. This is an internal transfer for administrative services. And then finally, as discussed, we have to pay our debt on our, on our water treatment plant improvements, and we need to make an inter-fund transfer from Water Fund 740 to the Water Debt Fund 744, in the amount of $230,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any comments or questions? My only question was whether or not it needs to be suspended because of the property taxes? No? Yes? Okay. That's, I, yeah, okay. I don't think we had that on the list, but yes. No, that's okay. That's okay. That caught my eye. So if you would like to make a motion to suspend, for the reason being that we have property taxes that are coming due, I think before the end of February, correct? Yep.
President Isley, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance 03320.
Second.
Thank you. The reason being is that we have property taxes that are due.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 03320.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and second. Any comments, for approval? Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have a one-reading resolution that we talked about in committee last week. This is a Resolution 320, a resolution in support of the National League of Cities, leading together cities' agenda, their agenda for the 2020 U.S. presidential election. And as a member of the National League of Cities, the city of Athens is, we're supportive of this, and so are proposing this resolution. And it is calling for promoting shared values, which include respect, partnership, inclusion, and accountability, and then also supporting a shared commitment of building sustainable infrastructure, creating a skilled workforce, ending housing instability and homelessness, and reducing gun violence. So if somebody would like to make a motion for approval of the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of the ordinance, or resolution, excuse me. Any, any comments? Yes, Councilmember Paul?
I've worked with the city lead for, we have together, and a lot of really interesting projects have come out of that. I would, I would like to point out that the cities and the mayors across the United States have been one of the leading factors of helping with climate change and our climate emergency. They've been out there forefront, leading every single day in the ways that we can make for a sustainable and a more climate-friendly future. They've come forward when the federal government decided to shirk their responsibilities and drop out of the Paris Accord. So I think that this is the right way to move for the cities, because the cities are the lifeblood of the United States right now. Thank you.
Okay, yes, Councilmember Kotzis.
You know, and this was just something that I heard today on the, on the news radio, was that Ohio ranks 42nd out of 50 states in how well we address homelessness, especially with the younger population and mental illness. So I think everybody, we need to do a little bit better with that.
Some work to do. Okay. Yes, Councilmember Crowell?
If I could just highlight one section of this resolution that really, I think, speaks to some of the climate that we have in this country and what's happening in our governmental systems, and I think it's terribly important. The city of Athens, Ohio urges all candidates running for president to support the 2020 city's agenda by bringing a spirit of partnership to American politics and governance, and by making a commitment to respect the authority of local governments. Thank you.
Point well taken. All right. Mayor Patterson?
Thank you, Councilmember Crowell, for pointing that out. I also just wanted to mention that I am one of the 28 members, and one of your whereas is on here, that is part of the Presidential Candidate Task Force in getting the information that you received last week as to what the requests are of the candidates within their first 100 days to act on the items that you have in here, and that we've been working really hard on trying to get this before the candidates and get them to commit. And I think I mentioned this at committee last week, that there is one candidate who is currently committed to the tenants herein, so.
Okay. Are you now allowed to say who that candidate is?
I can, sure. It is Mayor Pete Buttigieg.
Thank you.
Has agreed to what is contained in this document.
Thank you for your leadership on that.
You're welcome.
All right. We have a motion and second for approval of Resolution 320. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the resolution is approved. All right, we have announcements and other business. The first one being the confirming the mayor's reappointment to the Shade Commission and our representative to the Shade Tree Commission. Councilmember Kotzis has that.
President Isley, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion for the reappointment of Lee Gregg to the Shade Tree Commission.
Second.
And this would be another, another go for her. We would love to continue having her on the, on the commission. Her term would end 12/31/21.
Okay. We have a motion and second. We have a motion and second for confirming the reappointment of Lee Gregg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks to Lee, yeah, for all her work. And I think, yes, Councilmember Crowe.
I don't see on our agenda an approval of the poet laureate. Were we going to do that tonight, or has that been?
It could be. Do we? It could be. We typically, we have, it's been in the, and she made a presentation, as did the Arts Commission, so thank you for remembering.
So we move? Move to accept the move?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Wendy McVicker as the new poet laureate.
Second. Okay, lots of people want to second that one, good. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, and welcome, and thanks to Wendy McVicker for all the work she seems, I know she will be eager to do in the community. Okay, and Councilmember Smedley, yes?
Thank you. I had two things, just to circle back to the start of the meeting when we talked about the Accessible Ohio event. The name and the keynote speaker is Habin Germa, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that. She again is speaking on Thursday, February 20th at Walter Roltan at 6:30. She is the first deaf-blind person to graduate from Harvard Law School and has since become a strong advocate for people with disabilities. The city is a co-sponsor of her visit, as well as the County Board of DD and the university, as well as other entities. So that was just that reminder. And also, I wanted to share that as the West Side rep, I'll be hosting West Side Chats quarterly. My first one will be Wednesday, February 26th, from 5:00 to 6:00, in the lobby of Arts West. And that's at 132 West State Street. Thank you.
Mayor Patterson?
You guys are going to get tired of hearing this, but it's census 2020 time, and just wanting to consistently and constantly message that out to where we really need for everyone to be counted. That includes our entire Ohio University student body, so hopefully you can help message that, too, to where everyone gets out, to where we can get the most complete count possible here in the city of Athens and Athens County.
Do we have a complete count commission?
We do. We do. County Commissioner Krishmail is kind of, leads that, but we all are shoulder to shoulder on getting this through.
Maybe we can, at some point...
Somebody wants to join that group.
Right. Maybe we can also have him come in and do a presentation during one of our committee meetings.
Yeah, we could have Erin Degras come down and possibly speak at a council meeting, if he can come down in the evening, because he is our regional rep, I believe.
Yes. Anybody who's, he presented to us last year, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt, it would probably help to do it again.
And apparently that, that group that is working to promote the census count here says that there are still some good jobs available, part-time jobs of about 15 hours a week, or starting at 15 hours a week, that pay $16 an hour. And so if any of you happen to know college students who would want a pretty well-paying part-time job, they could help the city and, you know, pay the rent, so.
What's important to us is that that census count then determines lots of different programs, mass transit, funding dollars, different programs for food, and many services that are important to our community, so really important.
President Isley? I, correct me, Mayor, if I'm wrong, but I believe that college students are to be counted where they are. And so if, even if you continue to maintain voter registration or a permanent resident at your hometown or where your parents' address is for census, you're accounted where you are in April. And so if you are a college student at Ohio University, please, please complete the census here.
You can do it online, beginning in March.
Member Grace, I'm glad you brought that up, because that is fact. It is a place and time count. And so since you live here in Athens and attend Ohio University, you are counted here. Do not rely on mom or dad or anybody else, you know, any guardian filling out that census and including you in it. That, that can't happen. They cannot do that, so.
Right.
I appreciate you bringing that up.
My, my son will be counted in the census in Oregon, so, but he maintains his permanent address and voter registration here in Athens, so it's just something that feels odd, but I want to make sure that, that people here in Athens understand that it is a count at a moment in time, and at that moment, Ohio University students are here. So please, please be counted here.
Okay, great, thanks. We will have committee meetings next week, and so any chairs know at this point if they have, yes, you will have service safety.
Yes.
Finance and personnel likely, maybe planning?
I don't know.
Okay.
Depends on a 50.
I would assume, yes, but we'll find out.
Okay, just let Debbie know by Wednesday. All right. And at the end of the meeting, we always have an opportunity for citizens to speak about agenda items that have not been covered tonight. Is there anyone wishing to speak? They'd have up to three minutes. Okay? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for adjourned our meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned at 7:57. Thank you very much.